I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This is a special board meeting. Fairly short agenda here. We're gonna start with the SEACR part two. Matt Cooper is right here. He can take me through this. So I know I do not have to read the whole thing. Correct, Matt? But we are responsible for these answers. So I'm hoping you had time to look it through. Why don't we just take the big sections one by one? I won't read everything, but we'll just make sure there are no questions on that. So number one is impact on land. Anyone?
No.
Okay. I'm not trying to rush you, but I don't want to waste time either. Impact on geological features, that was a no, so there's nothing there. I think we agree with that. Impacts on surface water. That's a yes. Of course, it's near the river. Any questions on any of those?
Nope.
Ask the expert here, which would not be me. Section four, impact on groundwater, that's a no. Section five, impact on flooding, that's a yes.
Not this year.
No.
They're gone.
It's bad. The river is so low.
It's so unheard of for this time of year. It's just so unheard of.
So Matt, I'm assuming that you had to go with the new floodplain maps that came out, I don't know, last year? When you talked about the 100-year floodplain and 500-year.
Yeah, whatever the most current are available through FEMA.
Yeah, all right.
When was our last flood? Ninety-eight? After the ice storm? That was our last one, wasn't it?
No, I thought it was ninety-six.
I thought it was before, yeah.
We didn't have one with the ice storm?
No.
I don't think so.
No, it was, but within a year.
Yeah, it was back then.
Ninety-six to ninety-seven.
It was a year after or a year before?
Yeah. Section six, impact on air, no. Section seven, impact on plants and animals. No. Stop me if you have any questions. Section eight, impact on agricultural resources, nothing. Section nine, impact on aesthetic. I'm sorry, that kinda made me laugh when I was reading this. Aesthetic resources.
And what are those that we have down there? Are there any?
Well, the river is attractive and...
The aerial view was quite lovely.
It's attractive in certain parts. I think that's what they're referring to in A. Small impact. Section ten, impact on historic and archaeological resources. Yeah, that's just because that has the potential for being a historic, on the state historic register.
What's that say? That our wastewater plant could be on that?
No, I mean, it's close to them. Some of the buildings, like the history center.
What were you saying? It was like, really?
It could potentially. Because there's no, there's nothing there right now that's historic.
Oh, too funny.
Okay.
Sorry, gotta laugh. That's all I gotta laugh.
I know, I know. Eleven is impact on open space and recreation, that's a no. Twelve, impact on critical environmental areas, that's no. And just a minute, I can't seem to turn that page.
Transportation?
Transportation is a no. In energy is a yes because of, oh, a little bit of energy use because of the new UV system. Fifteen, impact on noise, odor, and light is a yes. I believe that's primarily during construction. Yeah, yeah. And sixteen is impact on human health. That's a yes. I will say, Matt, that the section A about the daycares, that information was not accurate. There's no, there's no longer a daycare on Pine Street. I don't know if this, I don't know if this matters, and there's no daycare on Main, but there is one on Cedar. So Cedar is in that distance.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
But when I read further into that, section three that broke everything down, it mentioned one on Pine and one on Main. I don't know if it matters. There is one, but it's not on those streets. Okay? So that's a yes. Section seventeen, consistency with community plans. Community wishes. That's a no. Consistency with community character, nothing there. And that is it. Does anyone have any questions, comments?
Nope.
Nope, I think it's fine.
All right. Okay, so what do I do next, Matt?
So the next step is to have the board pass the resolution for the negative declaration.
Got it. All right.
State your conclusion of the SEACR, and then authorizes you as the mayor to sign part three and check box A, that will be no significant environmental impact.
Got it. Okay. All right, so I'll read this resolution. Proposed action Village of Champlain Wastewater Treatment Facility Improvements Project. Resolution determining that the proposed Village of Champlain Wastewater Treatment Facility Improvements Project is a type-one action and will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Whereas the Village of Champlain is proposing the Village of Champlain Wastewater Treatment Facility Improvements Project located in the Village of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, and whereas the project has been classified as a type-one action as defined by the State Environmental Quality Review Act in 6 NYCRR Part 617.4, and whereas the Village of Champlain Village Board sent a letter in part one of a full environmental assessment form to other potentially interested agencies and involved agencies indicating the village's desire to serve as the lead agency and to complete a coordinated review of the project. And whereas, responses from interested and involved agencies were requested, and each of the potentially interested and involved agencies has agreed to or raised no objections to, the Village of Champlain Village Board serving as lead agency for the project. And whereas pursuant to the SEACR regulations, the Village of Champlain Village Board has considered the significance of the potential environmental impacts of the project by using the criteria specified in section 617.7 of the SEACR regulations and examining the FIF for the project, including the facts and conclusions in parts one, two, and three of the FIF, together with other available supporting information, to identify the relevant areas of environmental concern. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Village of Champlain Village Board hereby establishes itself as lead agency for the project, and to be it further resolved that based upon an examination of the FIF and other available supporting information and considering both the magnitude and importance of each relevant area of environmental concern, and based further upon the village's knowledge of the area surrounding the project, the Village of Champlain Village Board makes the determination that the project will not have a significant adverse environmental impact and that the project will not require the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. And be it further resolved that as a consequence of such findings and declaration and in compliance with the requirements of SEACR, the Village of Champlain Village Board as lead agency hereby directs the Village of Champlain Mayor to sign the FIF part three, Determination of Significance, indicating that a negative declaration has been issued for the project. This resolution shall take effect immediately and will be properly noticed. Roll call, Mary? Trustee Chong Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Chong Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich?
Aye.
The foregoing resolution was thereupon declared duly adopted. Let's turn that into a revolution. Okay. Now, is part three, do we, do we have to discuss anything, or is that just something that I will sign now that we pass the resolution?
Yep, you just need to sign it and check box A, and all you need to do is scan that one page, email it to me.
Okay.
And then we take care of getting it listed with the DEC. What's it called? Gets published on their website, the ENB, Run My Vote is bold.
Okay.
And that's the final, final pack.
Okay, all right. I'll take care of that tomorrow. Yeah, I'm doing that. I'm doing that tonight, too. But I thought if, you don't need to stay on for that, but we also are going to discuss the engineering agreement for the water project. That... Did we freeze? Are you there? Oh, sorry. Yeah, so I've got the numbers that Anthony had sent for the estimated engineering for the water project. And I just didn't know if the board had any questions about that, because we also have to approve that. So that, I'm jumping out of order on my handwritten agenda, but I figured I've got Matt here, so... Those estimated engineering costs are $280,000, I believe?
Correct.
If I put my glasses on, I can see that. I know we've discussed this before, but... Does anyone have any questions for Matt regarding those?
Where's the $82,000 preliminary though? Why am I missing that? For preliminary engineering design phase, it's here on this side here. It's on this...
Right. The breakdown of when, how it's broken down, the different steps? Yeah, I'm only looking at the total. I don't think I have the other one printed, but yeah, $82,000 is the...
Yeah, $82,500.
Yeah, is that first.
Preliminary design.
Right.
And we... Everybody's paid for that? Paid us started, or what?
Yeah, so Matt, can you explain? Anthony explained this to me already, but can you explain how we don't have to come up with a check for $82,000 right now?
Well, yeah, unlike the sewer project, which you want us to start designing immediately so that we can meet the compliance schedule for the disinfection happen design by this fall. The water, you're not under any compliance schedule. You're only on your own schedule whenever you decide that to be. So we don't need to start designing on that unless you want us to. So this gives me agreement in place, so you can apply for WIA funding, because it's required for WIA.
Okay.
However, the only service out of that entire list that we would start billing at this time would be the funding, the funding applications, whether it be CDBG or WIA. That would be it at this time, and we wouldn't proceed with any of the other services unless you authorize us to do so.
So is that the $25,000 for funding assistance?
Yeah, that's an hourly allowance essentially.
So that's an estimate of what you think it's going to take to do that work?
For the whole project.
Yeah.
For the whole project, all the way to the final, final equation, so, you know, and it's hourly, whatever applications we work on for you is all that gets billed against that.
And Matt, generally, how many times in these estimates that you provide do you come within the budget? Or less?
Usually pretty good. You know, we've got enough experience with enough of these projects. I know, you know, every project's a little bit different. Some projects, you're successful, your first round of grant application sometimes takes two or three rounds. That would be the only thing that would potentially cause us to exceed that amount is that, excuse me, we're unsuccessful about after a round. But I think it's a pretty reasonable estimate based on the size of this project, scope on it, and your funding eligibility.
Okay.
And point out, so that's why we have to do services like that hourly, because there's so much of it that's out of our control. Funding agency turns you down two years in a row, and we've gotta do a third round of applications. I mean, that's not something we can necessarily anticipate and budget for for us internally.
And have you heard any updates on whether these grants are gonna be available this year?
CDBG, they are anticipating coming out with their grant. We haven't heard anything on the rest of the CFA, and we haven't heard anything on WIA yet either. That was, now the May is about the time CFAs are normally announced. Now that the New York State has passed its budget, I think they should be in a position to start announcing what they're going to make available. You know, if the federal bill passes, I think that would give the state the last bit of certainty.
It keeps freezing. There. Yeah, it's on my end. All right, any other, any other questions?
No, that's all I have. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I think that's, I think that's it, Matt. I'm gonna go ahead and now, we're gonna, we're gonna do the bond resolution, but you can sign off if you want.
So now that we have signed agreement for sewer, which you did previous meeting?
Yeah.
SEACR's done, and the bond resolution will be done. Do you want officially authorize us to start designing the sewer project?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's the design of the entire scope of it?
I think that's what we agreed to do, right? We went back and forth. We decided to go with the whole thing, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Sometimes it's hard to keep both projects.
Oh, believe me. Yeah, it's very hard to keep both these projects separate. You know, so... Yeah, I think the decision from the board was that we were going to go for it and hope we get funding.
Hope we get funding. If we have to, we'll have to shave something off.
Do you think you need your confirmation that you did qualify for the zero percent?
Yes. Yes, correct, yeah.
But to rest some concerns about that?
Yeah, yes. Okay, so we'll proceed.
Thanks, Matt.
We'll have a great evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
You too.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Just let me get out of this. Okay. All right, so for the bond resolution, I am not reading this entire packet here. Thank you.
Yeah, you don't have to.
No, I don't, but what I thought I would do is just read the first, like, the first section that states, we're, we're recording this, just the audio. I'll just read the first part of it. All right, so this is bond resolution dated April 12th, 2021. The resolution authorizing subject to permissive referendum the construction of improvements to the wastewater treatment plant in and for the Village of Champlain, Clinton County, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $4,200,000, and authorizing the issuance of $4,200,000 serial bonds of said village to pay the cost thereof. Whereas the capital project hereinafter described as proposed has been determined to be a type-one action pursuant to the regulations of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, promulgated pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which the Village Board of Trustees has determined will not have any significant adverse impact on the environment. Whereas it is now desired to authorize such capital project and its financing now therefore be it resolved by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the total voting strength of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain, Clinton County, New York as follows. And I'm not going to read all the sections unless you want me to.
No.
No, no, no.
Okay. So Mary, can you do a roll call on that, too, please? Trustee Chong Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Chong Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. It slightly terrifies me to read that gigantic number. Okay, I'm not gonna think about that right now. So for the engineering cost for the water line replacement that Matt was just describing, so we, we need to authorize them to start doing the grant applications. Right? We can't just sit on this now. So they said they would, they would bill us bit by bit, because when I first got that breakdown, the number that you read, Tom, the $82,500, I'm like, oh my gosh, me, we have to write you a check for $82,500? And Anthony said, no, 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 that's, that's just when we get to that part. But first they would apply for the grants, and then hopefully we get some money, and then we have some money to work with.
So we're gonna have several thousand here and several thousand there.
Yeah.
Those are announcements.
Yeah, yeah, that's what's gonna happen.
So what do you need for approval for that?
When are we getting the, the income survey? That will give us a better picture.
Well, they're going to start that soon. Mary's been working on a list of the residents to send to them to mail out the letters.
I have done. I finished it.
Oh, you did? Wow, awesome. Whoa, good work. It's a lot.
Well, it helped that they were able to take it from our water sewer program and put it into a Excel program to start. I just had to add information on the number of apartments if they're multifamilies and that's all.
Thank you, Mary.
I don't have everybody's name, but I have how many should be there. Yeah. No, that's fantastic. Thank you so much. I think that they want to get the information by the end of June, because some grant applications come in July. So as far as a motion, I don't really know how much we, how we word this. I mean, maybe, I suppose we could, we could approve just paying the estimated engineering costs on this, and then it doesn't mean we have to spend it all. Some of the grants cover engineering and some don't cover engineering, so that's the problem.
So we're talking the $25,000 right now?
That's the grant writing part, right?
That's the grant writing part.
Funding assistance, yeah.
I mean, we definitely have to approve. I think we have to approve the $25,000, because they need to get started on this as soon as things are announced.
So I make a motion to approve up to $25,000 as estimated for funding assistance, which will be paid out in increments based on their elderly rate.
Is there a second?
Second?
Discussion?
No, I mean, I don't have any discussion any further.
I thought Amy's question was very interesting. I mean, I, I wondered how he was going to answer that, about the, you know, the, how often, how often do they hit that target? I mean, I'm sure that it's a, they studied the amount of hours that it takes to do each application, and, but then...
Right, but we saw how off this water project was, so dramatically off.
Yeah, I never, I never really, I had no idea how off they were in their categories. It's like, what, what threw it way off? What part of this?
Yeah.
Well, we'll be overseeing this whole thing, so we'll see it.
Yeah.
Right, we didn't get to see that.
Hold them accountable as it begins to escalate.
Right.
Right, we need to keep track of it.
I'm not confident in this at all.
We need to keep track of it.
I'm not really either, but we just absolutely, we absolutely have to do something. So I don't know how else, we don't have the money ourselves.
So as we pay out, we need to, you know, keep a good record of what we're paying for. Otherwise, we will never know at the end. If they go over budget, we'll have a clue where it went.
Yeah, so if we can get that update, have Juanita give us each month what we've expended and just add to it so it continues on in front of us.
And what it was for, you know.
Exactly.
Right, in each ca, in each category.
Yeah, yeah, run a separate sheet, accounting sheet on it.
Yeah, we just don't wanna be blindsided at the end.
No, because of the project with the town, we didn't, we didn't see any of that.
No, well, we weren't lead agency either.
No, exactly. So they paid the bills, and all we know is at the end, there was nothing left for us, and it was...
And we're gonna have, we're gonna have a lot of questions from our villagers, that's for sure. And I think this will be the best way for all of us to be able to answer consistently the same across the board.
Yeah, so we're all educated that...
Exactly.
Where it went.
And let's face it, meeting to meeting, we don't retain everything, you know, and it's having that build upon.
Yeah.
And I'll say it again, too. If it's not documented properly, it's easy to get these two projects...
Tell me about it. Every time I...
Confuse and meld it together. Okay, which one are we talking about now? It's not bad enough we have one big project, we're trying to pull two of them off.
I know. I know. I mean, we're forced to do the UV plant, the UV disinfection.
And we're forced to fix this water line.
And we're forced to fix the water line, so they're all tied together. I know, I agree. I have a really hard time keeping this straight. I have to review it every single time I start to think about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
We rolled calls, $25,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, roll call. Trustee Chong Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Chong Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich?
Aye.
And then the only other thing we need to discuss is, again, a short discussion on this brush pile collection site. Tom, did you get any more information on that?
No, no, he hasn't called me back. I know. I'll give it a couple more days.
Who are you reaching out to?
The Tatro farm.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Dale and Doug, Bird for the Great Bunny, they actually let the town get stuck there last year.
Oh.
Interesting.
Interesting, huh?
So I reached out to Dale and he needs to talk to his brothers, and I'm assuming Don is back. I know he was out of town with Lorna for a few days. So I'll give him a couple days, and I'll reach back to him.
Okay.
That'd be great. Yeah, I was trying to think of people that have got land that they...
And like I told them, I said, for some reason you guys won't do this for us. Can you help me find a slot? I mean, there's gotta be other land in this township.
Going out towards Moore's Harts is filling in some of their land. How far, how far I'm set?
Is that where Sandy Stone and Fred live?
Yeah, where Hart, that's his...
Hart's Long Care. All their trucks are out there, their garages, but they're slowly filling in some of that land. And when I went by today, it looked like there were leaves and branches in there, when they throw crushed stone over the top.
They probably do that for their business.
I know, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe.
If they're trying to fill it in, if they need more.
You know, like I, like I told Dale, this is gonna be very controlled, because it's not like we're asking to open a dump where people come. This is where we're picking it up, and we won't pick up dirt. We're just picking up, you know, precisely leaves and leaves and... So hopefully...
Why don't we fill some of the empty warehouses that we have all over town?
Yeah, no.
Right? Be good use.
Yeah.
They're never gonna rent. They're never gonna rent. The only thing that's gonna happen is they're gonna get torn down.
I know, I know.
I mean, the error of this border and needing warehouses is done.
Seems like it.
It's done.
You're talking about the, our industrial park?
Yeah.
The development core, I think, controls that.
All the free taxes, and then bye-bye.
Well, let me know, Tom. Because, of course, we're getting a lot of calls.
Sure, people are filing stuff up already.
There's a lot of stuff on site.
Mike Jolker's been out for a week on vacation, so when he comes back... Mike Jolker's been out for a week on vacation, so when he comes back to...
What?
He took a week on vacation?
What?
He had time, he needed to take.
He needed to take, he needed to take some time.
About time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, so when he comes back tomorrow, I'll just have a serious discussion that we are going to find a place.
Yeah.
Even if we go back to our old location and just use it for this season, but we have to find someplace.
Yeah, if we can't find anything between, you know, now and the end of the week, then we probably will have to start there.
That's what I'm thinking.
And we'll keep working towards it, but I really believe there's gotta be a spot.
I agree.
Yeah.
Nothing at the top of the hill there and all that space.
There's a lot of guys.
Top of Prospect.
No.
What about filling the old water tank with the stuff and it'll break down?
I did talk to him. I thought maybe there was enough land up there, but it's not really, you know, they use that. There really isn't a lot of space up there. The sand, yeah, and they need to be able to maneuver in there.
Who owns the old dump, which is across from the new water tower?
I thought we own that.
No, it's out of the village.
No, it's not in the village.
Oh, just out?
Just barely.
Yeah, it's almost across from, directly across from the new water tank.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. I know exactly what you're talking about.
You know what? I think the town owns it and that's controlled. That's not the only old dump that they, and they get, that gets inspected every year. There's another place, too, I believe, that gets inspected, that's in the town. An old dump.
Probably, uh...
It's been closed down somewhere.
Probably, it's on 276.
Oh, oh, probably.
Yeah, it's probably out there.
Yeah.
That one's got a ton of contamination in it.
She is so good. I forgot she was there.
I did, too, except for the leash in my lap. I forgot she was sitting there.
Well, that's all I have.
Uh, what is this invoice for $2,697?
That's what happens when I go off my agenda. All right, so we have to pay one-third of the income survey. That was what we agreed to, so...
Well, I thought it might have something to do with that, but I'm looking at the number going, wow, that's very small.
Yeah, so it's, um, yeah, so it's one-third of that income survey.
Okay.
And I need a motion to pay that.
Some more.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, any discussion, any questions? It was just not, yeah, it was just under $10,000, so that's a third of it.
Yep.
All right, roll call. Trustee Chong Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Chong Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay. I think that's it. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming two weeks in a row. It's just the way the calendar fell on these...
She did a good job, Lily.
I never.